At least here, what we felt, you know, a group that took the time to deliberate about our council rules and hear how this group felt. Practice known as citizens' jury. And so as we go through, just feel free to chime in and ask any questions. We'll start with Alderman. Which is fairly, I think the first couple of sections are fairly self-explanatory if we have any questions regarding those. Motion to join the council should always be in order except for what was being taken at, something we discussed.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What kinds of things become special orders of business?
Essentially, anything that isn't on the consent agenda is typically a special order of business. So it's something that's a bit more controversial is typically what a special order of business is.
Anything that's not on the consent agenda?
Essentially, yeah. Anything that doesn't end up on the consent agenda is typically a special order of business here.
Doesn't seem very special to them.
Well, that's what makes it special. It's something that is more controversial, so, yeah, yeah. That members may want to have a discussion.
So all controversial decisions end up being special?
We're on page three, starting on page three. Ms. Duke.
Oh, I just wanted to check, where do we stand on this citizen comment issue with Mayor Haggerty talking about you can't give your time to other people and so on? Is that still in the Rules Committee or do we know?
That, I believe the last city council meeting, not yesterday, the meeting prior to that, that was referred to the Rules Committee. And I believe that will become up in August.
So it doesn't hold his rights and that's, so we can still give our time to, even as opposed to any formal vote or anything else? That rule has not been changed?
It wasn't a rule, it wasn't a definitive rule in the first place that folks had the right to cede their time to someone else. And so it is something that I would say is left up to the discretion of the chair. And until it is made an official rule, then it's left to discretion.
Any practice that has been done in this city is set and then it will then change, then they have to do it by a rule or a...
So I guess I will ask, I will very quickly defer to the two parliamentarians in the room. Do you believe that even if it wasn't written officially into our rules of order and it's not a violation of the law to get exactly?
I think Ms. Esther answered the question.
Yeah, okay.
If there's something that's been a custom or a common practice, it holds until there is a rule that prohibits it. So custom is as good as a bylaw or a rule if it's been carried out for a period of time. So they can't stop you on a whim, but if this is a practice and you know who are doing this since 1985, they can't stop you.
That I will not be here.
It's a violation of your rights, but if they want to write a rule addressing that, once that rule is adopted, then that's the rule. In the meantime, the practice stands.
Can just the committee, the rules?
Any rule in any committee, board, whatever, but...
But I mean, if the Rules Committee, is that all open Rules Committee?
So, in essence, they can do it in a Rules Committee meeting, not in public? I mean, adopting it. I mean, adopting the rule about comment, peer public comment, et cetera. But if it's a practice that the public can comment, but if there's a rule, you know, it's still run by the city council and the mayor, right? But if they have a rule that says you can't yield your time to somebody else and they adopt that rule and you gotta buy right, in the absence of a rule, you can do it. That's what you can do it.
And that's something that would be voted on by city council?
Yeah. Yeah, the Rules.
Rules Committee will refer it and say, yes, this is what we want, but then they have to bring that to the city councils and they have to vote on it.
Duke.
That's one of those standing committees I mentioned that have an ongoing function and in the city, it's the Rules Committee.
We'll keep moving through. Here we can see Rule 2.2, all matters relating to private business shall be decided by the mayor without debate. So I think that goes to the rule of, we had some questions earlier regarding whether the mayor, who has the ability to change the order of the agenda. I think that very clearly answers it, it's completely up to the mayor.
That's referring to the agenda?
Referring to the agenda, yes.
But an alderman could move?
An alderman also has the ability, but very clearly here in our council rules, the mayor has the ability to set the priority of business. And in fact, I'm sorry, yeah, without debate, without a vote, yes.
And if an alderman, say an alderman, say my alderman says, oh sure, I'll ask for that, do they have to move, have a vote on it?
Yes, the mayor, the alderman, your alderman, would have to make a motion to move the order of business.
Or could they better yet just say to the mayor, mayor, I'd like to, would you?
Yes, they could also do that because that, yeah, yeah, yeah. With 2.3, I think we can skip through a few of these. Unless there are any questions, we can skip down to number three, which is suspension of the rules. So we do know that the council has the ability to suspend rules and vote on an item that was introduced at a meeting. As long as we are following the Meetings Act and it has been properly noticed, then that is well within the council's right to do that. Any questions? Yeah.
I'm skipping ahead.
Oh, skip ahead.
It's on page seven, closed sessions.
Yes.
Any council meeting, which probably is, et cetera, so. Can you, do you now, can you tell us a little bit about what is arising with that section 120 slash 2 of the Act? Topics that can be discussed?
Yeah, yeah, so closed session is governed by the Open Meetings Act when it refers to a public body. So we can, we can discuss litigation, that is, before the council, so, you know, most recently in the news, we've had, a big case was the Suzanne Robinson case, for example. So we can discuss those things in closed session and that's allowed. We can discuss the sale of real estate. It'd be whether we're purchasing or selling real estate in closed session because we wouldn't want to announce that, hey, we're willing to spend $500,000 on this building and we could get it for $400,000. And so those kinds of decisions can, those kinds of discussions can be had in executive, made in executive session. Personnel issues, you know, if there's a conflict internally with staff, those kinds of issues can be discussed in closed session. The only thing is no final decisions can be made in closed session. Any final decision has to be made in open session. So if, you know, again, we can say that we were willing to spend up to $500,000 for a building, but we can't say, yes, we will spend $500,000 for this building in closed session. That decision has to be made here in open session. And there are a number of other exceptions to what can be discussed in closed session.
So on that, it says that each vote and the purpose of the closed session shall be recorded in the minutes of the open meeting. So for example, the last, same page, page eight, 8.1, on the very top of the page. So for example, I was at the last ethics, ethics board, ethics board meeting and they went into closed session and nobody had a clue why they needed to go into closed session. So somewhere we should be able to find then the purpose of that closed session.
Yeah, but you'll, what you'll find is a very generic explanation typically.
Usually it's, in organizations I serve, they discuss matters of a confidential nature, whether it's personnel, financial, and they just, but the decision is usually made, they're just there so they can talk amongst themselves and fight if they have to. They don't want to do openly. And then the decision is made in open session. But they can go into closed session. Many boards of directors will go into closed session and the general purpose is to state
Personnel for, yeah.
A confidential matter. We know that's personnel or discipline of a member or something. So there's a general title that...
And so that is what will happen with the city council or other boards. There will be a very general, hey, we're going in closed session to discuss, you know, let's say it's some police committee and they're discussing specifically an action of a police officer. They won't say what the particular thing is that they're discussing, but they'll say personnel and that will be recorded in the minutes.
When there's a specific issue and they go into closed session, then they come back with the decision.
But you didn't hear the discussion. You don't know what made them reach that decision. Many times, so that they can say anything they want, but the decision is public, but you don't know how they reached it. It's just that, as I said, I know organizations that have gone into closed sessions just so they can fight and they didn't want to make it public.
But they have to say it's something more than confidential matter.
No, well, there are...
So here now, you have to list the specific exception. You have to list the specific exception. You don't have to say details of what...
Not specifically of the category.
Right, the category. So for example, the ethics board, recent ethics board meeting, I mean, I just want a word. Give me personnel, give me finances, give me something.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah, and that should be happening. So whoever's recording...
Personnel, discipline, et cetera. You don't need to be that specific.
So it should, if you're, what, are you referring to the Rules Committee or the Ethics Committee? So whoever keeps the minutes, whoever the staff person is for that committee, should record it in the minutes.
Ms. Esther just brought up something very important. Minutes of executive session are approved in executive session. They're not part of the regular minutes. The board or the committee went into executive session to discuss matters of a confidential nature.
So the minutes of exec, but the reason they went into executive session should be in the open minutes.
Those are not part of the general minutes. You just state the fact that you went into executive session.
No, the reason. Is supposed to be, is recorded in the minutes of the open meeting.
That they went into executive.
The reason they went in. I should be able to see the rationale. It's just the raw rationale.
And then also remember that this dictates the council, not necessarily the boards, committees and commissions.
This is only for the council meeting rules.
So are those minutes then become open to the public?
No. No, so yes, so executive session minutes do, are eventually made open to the public on the council. We are to review those biannually and though, and the council decides, using their judgment, whether it's time to release minutes or not.
Is there a set time period?
No, essentially minutes can, you're supposed to release minutes, executive minutes, when the matter is no longer before, when it shouldn't be executive, private anymore. There are instances where to, I've seen, to preserve someone's feelings, that minutes are decided to, you know, we've kept, they have kept executive session minutes closed for various reasons. So it's at the discretion of the council for the most part.
Can you ever find out why, let's say you, for your, an executive committee meeting, and they say, no, you can't have it. Can you find out why you can't have it?
No, because you might essentially know what the issue is and gain insight to what the private matter is. You essentially have to wait until the council decides to release.
They have elected officers to conduct business. They'll let you know. Because the thing is, that do you want to be called into the lawsuit because you were witness to something that you shouldn't have been? Because that's what'll happen. If you make everything public, then you're a witness to everything and they can call anybody.
So let's say, you know, I...
If you were there, you're a witness.
I've seen exceptions. Let's say I make some mistake and we discussed it in executive session, I as the clerk, and the council decides that because I am still, you know, if not me as an elected official, but if I was an employee of the city and they decided because you're still an employee here, it could be detrimental to, you know, your personal well-being. If we release this, we will hold it longer. Mr. Sun.
I know closed sessions involve something that's confidential. My concern, whether if it's a property disposition matter, can they have a closed session with that interested group and keep out citizen participation?
Not as, I mean, individual members, not as a board. There wouldn't be...
Not members of the city council, but a board who wants to make an offer to the city. Does that have to be open to the Freedom of Information Act? Or can they negotiate with the manager and other members of the city council in closed session?
So no, you wouldn't negotiate, like, we wouldn't have developers coming to negotiate. We may discuss, developers would come before, let's say the council in open session, and then the council, as a deliberative body itself, would go into closed session to discuss what we heard in open session. All right, does anyone want to have, offer feedback on that or?
In negotiating property and stuff, when they get to the point that they are going to be dealing with the price and stuff and the attorney is part of that discussion, then it's done in closed things, but usually not poured in.
Yeah.
So they just talk, we want to buy, the people wanted to buy the parking lot. They came and they talked about, we want to buy it and everything. But when they got to the point that they wanted to offer a price and go start negotiating that price, that's when things went into the closed session.
Well, so we wouldn't...
Only then.
So I think what would happen is, let's say the library parking lot, if there are folks who want to buy the library parking lot, we wouldn't take that group into closed session and discuss their proposal. We would hear their proposal in open session and then go into closed session to discuss the merits of the proposal.
Including the price?
Including, yeah.
The price, not if the mayor...
Well, not the merits, the price is what we would be able to discuss.
The mayor out there of their proposal, it has to be discussed.
Discuss in open session, yes. The price, I should say, whether the price is good would be discussed in closed session. We'll move on to number four, which is appeals. So the mayor makes a decision. So for example, if the mayor made a call to limit the allocation of time, of public comment time from one person to another person. That is a rule or that is a determination that the council could, by a majority vote, overrule the mayor on that, at that council meeting. So someone, say, I disagree with that mayor, I agree with him, and they can, for example, vote to change that decision, to overrule that decision. Currently, I'm on page five, but if anyone's on another page, you can look ahead or a back. Committee chairs, we have other committee chairs selected unless it's a standing committee. If it's a standing committee, it's selected by Rules Committee. And if it is a, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just wondering, is there a set schedule for that, for whose chair of the standing committees? Is there some, like, rotating schedule? Because I noticed something, you know, that...
Typically, it's based on seniority. That's just kind of the standard. If you want, go ahead.
I'm just talking about, like, the Planning and Development Committee, it was Alderman Lynn, but now it's currently Alderman Fitz.
Yeah, it's been up like every month.
And it's just like, APW, is it now Alderman Fleming when it was someone before? I mean, so is there a schedule that it's like after so many months, someone else becomes chair? Or is it just the term?
I mean, yeah, there are changes in who the chair, typically when a new council gets elected, a few chairmanships are changed and...
Every six months, I think they change.
There's a hard and fast rule that I can recall. For, for, for non-council committees, there is a rule on term limit, you know. Someone can only serve on the board or commission for, I believe it's two or three terms. And that is a hard and fast rule within the council rules. But...
I'm just wondering, you know, because is it that the committee then makes a motion to make a new chair?
Are standing committees...
Okay, so is that scheduled? Yeah, the, I understand, standing committees, so is that scheduled publicly available?
Probably if you ask for it.
So that we know who the chairs are going to be?
Can we make a...
When an issue comes up before that standing committee?
I think you know who the chairs are. I don't know if there's a list that decides the next chair of the public, you know, Public Works Committee or whatever committee exists. There isn't a list that says this will be the next chair. I think it's decided closer to, yeah. Any other questions? Citizen participation, which is number six. Any citizen may address a committee at the invitation of the chair of the committee. Official public hearings for citizenship are allowed commonly by the city council and citizens. And so this is a big rule, number 6.2 is what allows for the, or what mandates that we only spend 45 minutes on public comment. We quite often go over 45 minutes, not actually, we sometimes go over 45 minutes. And it has been ruled by, you know, the North Courts, that it is reasonable for a public body to limit the amount of, the time that's allocated to public comment. And so that's what grants the council authority to limit it to 45 minutes. And as you'll notice, many committees, because, again, this only applies to the council, you'll notice that chairman of committees leave it up to their discretion to say, you know, instead of limiting someone to three minutes or one minute, you can speak typically as long as you want at committee meetings. 6.5 is interesting. During periods of citizen participation, which is citizen comment, comments from aldermen shall be rendered to request for information referrals to the appropriate committee or to referrals to the city manager for a response. And that is, that is an interesting rule there. I'm on Facebook Live now, so I feel, and now I know why you feel those strange.
Um, 6.3?
Yes.
So I was in at the city council meeting on Monday night, but I understand you have what to me sounds like a brilliant proposal in order to encourage broader community participation so that we can sign up for public comment online, which I think is a wonderful proposal, so that people don't feel like they have to get here two hours beforehand to get their name on and end up not coming at all because they're unable to. So where's that, where does that stand? I'm hoping that will move forward.
My interpretation is that it is something completely within my purview as the clerk to choose how, or either sign up for public comment as the person who keeps that list, or submit public comments. We'll move forward, 6.7, I think it is, that if anyone who wants to...
Request for information.
Yes.
Are you going through the entire rules? Because we got about 40 minutes or so of boards and committees. I'm not done.
We're not going to go through all of them.
I just wanted, that's why I said, request for information, not point of order. That's when the rules are open. Request for information is how much of this is you're going to cover because I've got another section to complete and it has to do with boards and committees. That can include the city council or any board or committee they're on anywhere. And it's important stuff, but it's all together. I just need to know time-wise how much you were going to cover.
I think we're going to move through, not every single item, but as much as folks have questions.
But that means, you'll stay in your seats.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, so I believe it is within, you know, my purview, as we see here, 6.7 says the clerk is responsible for, and also our city code says the clerk is responsible for collecting all communications to the council, all petitions addressed to the council. So it's written very clearly in our code here in the council rules that that is my duty. And part of creating this one-on-one system is if you only have, if there are 100 people here to speak on an issue and you only have one minute to speak, you may have written three pages worth of material or three minutes worth of material and you should be able to express what you had to express. And so you can submit that, either, you know, you can submit those written statements through the system or if you can't attend the council meeting, you can also submit those statements through the system as well and have your comment become a part of the public record.
But you can also sign up to speak.
You can sign up to speak and you can submit if you can't attend and you can't come speak, you can still submit your statements there. It's similar to, or you're supporter or opposition for a particular agenda item. It's similar to the state level where we, where we have witness slips. And if you support something, you know, HB 3, 4, 6, you can submit a witness slip without having to go down to Springfield and testify before that committee and you can submit statements as well.
And it says it will be, I'm sorry, it's part of the record?
Right.
Where is it?
Minutes is where we will put that, yeah.
Okay, in the 6.7, the last statement in that paragraph, where it says the full text of the written notice will not be read, but will be included in the, in its entirety in the record of the meeting. That is only if the person that is sending the written notice to you does not ask for it to be read. But if they ask you to read this into the record, you have to read all six pages or all 20 pages.
So that used to be a council, that it used to be something that the clerk did. There is specifically, as we move on, there is a council rule that prohibits that. It specifically says the clerk will not read the entire statement. And that the clerk will provide a brief, maybe synopsis of what was said and then the entire key of the statement will be in the minutes. So very quickly, city manager, there are a few rules within the session that tell it, I'm sorry.
Then here, they said they will not, but they did not change it enough when the, when these citizens asked for it to be read. They did not deal with that.
That's a possibility. That's something to look at too. Well, thank you. You know, here it says the city manager should be, this delineates how the city manager is appointed, how the city manager is potentially removed. You know, what happens if the city manager is in a temporary disability and that is discussed there. In session, in section eight, that is closed session and how that works. Here in section nine, we talk about committees and what the standing committees are and what the procedure for setting up. A special committee is, and what the various standing committees, what their responsibilities are on an ongoing basis. As we see here in section, moving on to section 10, is the conduct of members. So during city council meetings, no member of the council shall speak until recognized by the mayor. An alderman called to order by the mayor shall immediately cease speaking. There are a number of issues there. Used to be a rule that aldermen were required to stand when speaking. That is no longer a rule. Now it's, an alderman may stand. Conflicts of interest and abstentions. Of course, if an alderman has a conflict of interest with an item that is before them, that alderman should abstain from voting, as we see with some aldermen who regularly abstain from voting on issues. Number, section 12 is debate, and this is an issue that was discussed. You know, no alderman shall speak for longer than five minutes on the same subject, except by consent of the council, as we discussed earlier. Silence is consent. No alderman shall speak twice on the same subject until all aldermen who wish to speak have had an opportunity to be heard at least once again. Their silence is consent. But because we are governed by Robert's Rules of Order, as we established earlier, no alderman should speak more than twice on any issue. And if you speak twice, you should be ruled out of order if you want to speak a third time on a single issue.
And how about extending the five minutes? So, for example, I understand that the silence is consent. But with Robert's rules, should that be at least noted as they're going forward beyond their five minutes? Should that be...
Timed, timed.
Should that be timed and like when the city clerk or the chair or somebody point that out if they're speaking their third time? Even though silence is...
One way to remind people is have some colored cards and a timekeeper. So if you know you've got five minutes, when you're down to the last minute, they can hold up a card that says one minute. And then 30 seconds.
They can do that from the audience.
And then if it's red, you gotta stop. I had one organization in Memphis, Tennessee, that had microphones. That they turned off the microphone when your time was up.
City of Chicago has that.
Yeah. That they turned off the microphone. And I was up here and I could see who was speaking next because the microphones were numbered, number eight, nine, 10, et cetera. And they were timed as to one minute, two minutes, three minutes, so a person can't go on forever. See, that's when you call a point of order. You're going into the six-minute point of order, then you gotta stop them and say, stay to point. This member has spoken for five minutes and they're in five minutes and 59 seconds. Then I have to say to the person, your time, you've exceeded your time. But if you have a timekeeper that reminded people where they are, they know exactly when because some people get started and they don't know when to stop and let you tell them.
So those can call a point of order.
Aldermen are the members.
Any, yeah.
The members of the voting members of the board, yeah.
I'm talking about voting members.
I, uh...
You cannot?
I wanted to last night. And then, but I didn't want to be called out of order.
Or a staff member can hold up a card and let them know where they are, one minute left, 30 seconds left, et cetera.
I see a question. I want to go back just to debate. You said no more than five minutes on the same subject, but earlier...
On the same motion.
You had said on the same motion. So if there was motions going on, so they changed, then they would get another two times on the same motion?
Yeah, that's what I said.
So you could, you're out of date to talk. So that should be, but in this, it says subject, not motion, so...
I guess this would supersede Robert's Rules of Order. You can't talk.
It supersedes it because the people who are speaking... you're not making motions. They're making the motions so they can speak twice. You're here as observers. You're non-voting members.
But it says no alderman.
It says no alderman can speak twice.
On the same subject.
On the same subject. But they may have some subjects that they're just bringing up because, but don't have a motion. You know, there are, I'll explain that even to committees.
Uh, I'll move on to, uh-
Okay.
Did you have a question or question?
Yeah, we have city council rules. And we say, well, whatever the city ordinance are and everything. And in this room, number twenty-three says the rules of parliament's private conference in the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the city council in all cases in which they are applicable and in which they are not in conflict with these rules of the council. Okay, going through this here, there is not that many rules that is in conflict with Robert's Rules of Order. They didn't change the words to have it to be here through. So they really should be following totally the Robert's Rules of Order.
What they mean is, where they say, that's usually boilerplate language, that Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the business of this association in all business where unless, where they are not inconsistent with these rules. In other words, if you have your own rule on the subject that Robert says something else, you follow your own rules. If you don't have a rule on it, then Robert is in default. But your own rules always come before Robert's. Except when there's a law involved, federal, state, or local law. Then the law supersedes everything. But your rules, as long as you're not breaking the law, supersedes Robert's.
Right.
That's what they mean by where they're not inconsistent with any special rules the city council may adopt.
So oftentimes when there's, you know, aldermen have a question on something and they, they wanna have a point of information or anything, do they usually go to the corporation council? So is the corporation council just using city code? Or are they also taking into account the city council rules and Robert's Rules of Order? Sometimes, all I hear them say is they're citing city code. They're not really citing Robert's Rules of Order or city council rules.
Typically, they are citing, not Robert's Rules of Order, but typically, when I, in my experience on the dais, they've cited the council rules. Yeah. Or a city code if that would work.
But they don't give you that code or that rule number, so you don't know. So they are too, uh-
Well, one comment I wanna make is we have a number of people in our national organization who are parliamentary lawyers. I have worked with lawyers who are not parliamentarians and I make it plain, you're the lawyer, I'm the parliamentarian. You take care of your business, I'll take care of mine. And what they wanna do is quote the code. And I'm saying, but I'm the parliamentarian, this is a parliamentary issue. You don't give an opinion where a parliamentary, that is not law. They're quoting the code on everything. This is why we tell organizations, don't ever let lawyers write your bylaws because you won't understand a word. It's waiver of notice and everything is legal and you don't even understand it. I have another, part of this is what goes in, I do a whole program on what goes in bylaws. It's just that lawyers stick to the law and people look to them to issue parliamentary opinions as well as the law and they're usually quoting the law.
Right.
And we have told them at the national level, unless you are, when you're a parliamentary lawyer, you can't be both. Either you're the parliamentarian at this meeting or you're the lawyer. Don't cross.
Yeah, exactly.
So they're quoting law to you when it's really a decision that the assembly can make.
So we'll move on to section fourteen, which is about the mayor. The mayor is the presiding officer of all city council meetings, of course. The mayor is an ex officier member of all committees, boards, and commissions, which is, um, gives the mayor a lot of authority to potentially go into executive sessions of other boards, committees, and commissions. All ordinances, resolutions passed by the councils shall be deposited with the clerk and the mayor shall sign them. The mayor has veto authority. Essentially what this section is saying is that the mayor has veto authority by not, you know, has the ability to either do a line item veto. If, let's say you pass the budget and the mayor doesn't like certain sections of the budget, he can line item veto certain sections and transfer it back to the council. The mayor also has the ability to vote in a tie. The first time with the eightieth city council, the mayor had an opportunity to vote. And a tie vote was to provide additional funding to the clerk's office. So that has been used, I believe, twice with this council. And before that, I think that was a rare occurrence. The mayor may vote on the appointment of the city manager. So that is whenever, you know, we're selecting a city manager, the mayor has the ability to vote in that instance. The mayor shall not have the ability to vote to break a tie on incidental motions, which Ms. Bunley can talk about.
Because it's procedure.
Right, because it's procedure. And the mayor cannot vote if there is no tie. And then if, if the mayor is absent, we've had instances where someone serves as mayor pro temp. I think it's been alderman win typically. That does not preclude the person who's acting as mayor to, if they're an alderman, from voting. So they still have the ability to vote as mayor pro temp. The mayor also has the ability to refer any item to a committee, board, or commission or to the council. Move on to fifteen-
Except where there's a conflict.
Except where there's, yeah.
And so, and what about just weighing in?
It, it has been, I mean, by Robert's Rules of Order, the chair should not weigh in. The chair should be completely objective. But there are instances where our mayor has shown, I'll use the word leadership, or, yeah, he's the head of leadership, in stating his opinion, which I think when you're talking about a body such as a council, I don't see that as fully inappropriate. But to Robert's Rules of Order, that may be something that's seen as out of order. The media, with all meetings of the council, this is also within the Open Meetings Act, anyone may come and record any council meeting with any of the latest technology as long as it does not interfere with the business that is going on before the board. Sixteen is all meetings of the city council should be open to the public and the press with the exception of closed sessions specified in the Open Meetings Act. A quorum shall consist of six members of the city council. Special meetings may be held at any time upon proper notice. And so special meetings, we, special meetings can be held at any point with proper notice. Emergency meetings may be held without the forty-eight hour notice if it is a true emergency. We also have a rule that the council shall convene three times a month. And there are delineations as to what those meetings shall be. I think it says the third Monday of the month is reserved for proclamations, which that's not always the case. Minutes, a journal of the minutes shall be kept by the clerk and says where these minutes can be found and accessed. Every public body should keep minutes and that is typically the case. So we have eighteen motions. A motion may be withdrawn by the proposer at any time before a vote is called. So that is in conflict with Robert's Rules of Order where once a motion is given to the floor, it belongs to the floor.
I'm confused about eighteen three. It says all ordinances and obligations to spend or disperse monies shall be passed only by a roll call vote duly recorded five votes. As opposed to what? Roll call?
As opposed to a ye, or a no.
A yes and a no.
Yeah. So a voice, a voice vote.
So what does this mean duly recorded five votes?
Call the names. Just call the names.
Five votes is a majority.
So, so five votes to pass?
Yeah, yes.
That's a majority.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's roll call and they call the name, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, yes, no, and it's recalled.
Eighteen three is usually done with a consent agenda.
There's typically money involved with the consent. It's either the bills list or the Amazon list, which is separated now. So that's done by roll call. Ordinances also must be done, or must be voted on using a roll call vote. Resolutions do not require a roll call. Eighteen four, upon motion of any alderman, the vote should be done by roll call and recorded. So any alderman at any point, if they feel uncomfortable with a voice vote, may request that a roll call is taken and I will call the roll and record the votes. An interesting point here is, this is eighteen point twelve. We did discuss this earlier. At the request of two aldermen, any matter except a special order of business may be held over for consideration until the next regular meeting of the council. Any matter so held over may not be held over for a second consecutive time by this procedure. Any alderman may ask either the city manager or the alderman requesting the holdover to explain the impact of the holdover at the time the holdover is requested. If the request to hold the matter over is contested by a motion to overrule the request duly made and seconded, the motion to overrule will be sustained if at least two-thirds of the aldermen present vote in favor of the motion. A motion to overrule is debatable. Any citizen may inspect the matter under such deferred deliberation at the office of the city clerk.
That is the same as the motion to postpone definitely. It's a motion to postpone to a certain time. You're calling it holdover to the next meeting. That falls under the category of postpone definitely.
Which, and, 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 I don't think it comes up again.
Definitely means to a certain time. Indefinitely means to kill. You look at your ranking motions, you can see where it is.
Nineteen, we go into the, the consent agenda. It's fairly straightforward, yeah.
Sorry, I got to holding over. So holding over is different than tabling. It's just saying we wanna talk about it next week.
Holding it over is postponing it to the next meeting. Tabling it is putting it aside at the current time to take care of something else. You don't table something to the next meeting. You postponed it to the next meeting. Tabling it is putting it aside temporarily to take up something that is urgent and then you take it from the table.
Sure.
And-
You don't table something to the next meeting, you postponed it to the next meeting.
We have an incident where one of the aldermen tabled something until the budget was passed.
Well, if it's at the same meeting, maybe you don't wanna make a decision.
The state budget, which is genius. We didn't know.
Well, then that proper-
I think it was semantics.
That's why the justice programs, because people use table and postpone. I know the first time I had this hood movement in Chicago deals with homeless, every time somebody said table, I would whisper to the chair, postpone, and he would yell postpone. Now everybody's yelling postpone! Never table comes up because you have to use the right terms. They mean, they have different meanings and different decision making because postpone, you can amend. Postpone for the next meeting, this afternoon, later on this morning, and you can debate it and amend it. Table, you vote it up and down, or down. So there's different ways of approaching this. So table and postpone are different. They are different. Table is the top of the ranking motions if you look on your slip. And it says you can't take, you can't amend it or debate it. You vote it. And then, once your business is settled that you tabled it for, you can move, enter a motion to take it from the table or if there's no objection, your motion to do so and so is taken from the table.
Thank you. Twenty-two is reconsideration, so we discussed this a bit earlier. Any vote to approve the purchase, contract, bond sale, zoning variation, or special use whether by motion, resolution, or ordinance, or to confirm an appointment by the mayor to a commission board or advisory body or to convene into closed session may be reconsidered at the same meeting at which said vote was taken. An affirmative vote of two-thirds of the aldermen present is required for the motion to pass. The vote taken on any other motion, resolution, or ordinance may be reconsidered but only at the next regular meeting held after the meeting at which said vote was taken. An affirmative vote of the majority of aldermen present is required. A motion to reconsider may be made, may be made as set forth herein only once. An emotion to reconsider must be made by an alderman who voted on the prevailing side. However, when a motion, resolution, ordinance fails to pass by, fails to pass by reason of not having received a required extraordinary vote, a motion to reconsider properly made may be seconded by any other alderman. And we will get to extraordinary votes very soon. And so this is an example of if, you know, strategically, if you know that your item is going to die, you may vote on the side that kills it.
Die inside.
And you may vote, yeah, you may vote on the side that kills it just to bring it back. So that's something you can strategically talk to your alderman about.
You may have to teach him that.
Yeah, you may have to teach him that.
I have a question. When you're doing the order of the votes, it changes every week, right?
Yes. So that is, so at the beginning of the year, the, honestly, it hasn't been done by my office. It has been selected by the city managers often. I recently read something that said that I fully have this authority due, so it will be done next year. At the beginning of the year, the clerk's office is to release a list for every council meeting that- So one, the council has to release a list at the beginning of the year of all of the regularly scheduled meetings. The clerk's office then is to release a list of all, the order that the alderman will be called in for roll call vote and for, to take the role at the beginning of the year. And it's supposed to alternate every meeting. So it's, you know, instead of going from Judy Fisk to Alderman Fleming every single meeting, which could influence the way, you know, it's, you know, it's how you read the room, depending on where you fall in the vote. And so that list is available publicly. I can give it to you next year. Maybe we can all work together to create the list.
And then when it's, whatever the order is, it's the order for the entire meeting?
Yes, yes, it is the order that the roll call is given for the entire meeting, yes. Yes. So if we have a special meeting, then no vote shall be reconsidered or rescinded at that special meeting. So, and I think the Harley Clark meeting may have been a special meeting. I don't recall if that was a regular or a special meeting.
It was a special meeting.
Yeah, so. Most reasonable. So for, we'll move on to twenty-five. Extraordinary, extraordinary votes, extraordinary votes. Three-quarters of elected aldermen when holding office, so that's seven votes. So extraordinary votes kick in with the vacation of streets and alleys, with the passage of a map amendment, when thirty percent of the property owners within five hundred feet of the boundary of an area to be amended file a written protest with the clerk. So if you live within five hundred feet, if there's a map amendment or if there's a unique use, usage, a change in zoning, thirty percent of the property owners who live within either five hundred foot radius, if it's a passage of a map amendment or if it's a passage of unique use, may submit a petition to the clerk's office and that will make the council have to kick in a three-fourths vote as opposed to a simple majority vote to pass some items. Two-thirds vote is required for the sale or lease of real estate, purchase of goods and services over twenty thousand dollars, the passage of an ordinance over veto of the mayor. So if the mayor vetoes an ordinance to override veto, it's a two-thirds majority is required. To overrule the liquor commissioner, which is the mayor, to reject it, a two-thirds vote is required there as well. And there are a number of other requirements that kick in a two-thirds requirement. Every year, number twenty-six is, isn't so much a rule of how we operate, but it says that the compensation of the alderman and all elected officials will be decided by a non-aldermanic committee every four years. Number twenty-seven is ward communication policy. Every alderman has the ability to hold ward meetings and this requires the city staff assistant holding those ward meetings, that the alderman has the ability to send out two postcards a year to their ward and that they will have at least six newsletters per year and a number of announcements that city staff will help them develop. There's a technology allowance. Every alderman and the mayor is given seventy-five dollars, I believe, monthly to pay for cell phone bill or for some technology allowance.
So they shouldn't complain about getting too many emails?
I would hope that, you know, if we, if, if the clerk's office is a- I would, I would hope that, you know, if we, if, if, if the clerk's office is able to fully implement this system, that folks will know to submit those comments to be included in the official record and then they can disperse that to the council. So, instead of emailing the alderman, maybe you can submit your comments through the clerk's office and put in the minutes and maybe their minutes can be a hundred pages long.
Yeah, I have a question about that, though. Like, is citizen comment, like, what good does it do? Really?
Citizen comment can be very effective. It, it, you know, I, I, I think it can be. I think especially when the council sees folks who don't traditionally show up, show up. I think the, you know, the minimum wage tussle, whatever you want to call it, was an example of, you know, maybe the council changing its views because a lot of people showed up and were upset. I think there are a number of instances where a swell of public participation can influence the council. I think most recently with the youth and young adult department. That was removed from the list. I think that was because of the public pressure that was built.
Right, I also can say just for the public to build public rights. I, I think it's almost most important for this, not so much talking with the council people. But I think to enlighten the public, since it's recorded, since it goes in the newspaper, that's what's really important in terms of building a public pressure. I think that that venue needs to be used to inform and enlighten the general.
Okay. I served as parliamentarian for the Evanston Public Library for a few years and it was the public comment that saved the branches. Because when those rooms, they hired me because of people coming, because they weren't sure how to do it. But when folks started signing up and coming, and next thing you know, the north branch is enclosing and the south branch, the twin group or somebody took it over. It was the public showing up and filling up those rooms to standing room only. And even the city manager, Wally Bobbitts, came to one meeting and he had to inch his way into the room and to speak. But I believe, having served, jumped, I was brought because of that issue, that they really couldn't handle it, that I have to say at the end, it was the public comment and the citizen participation that saved the library.
Okay, but also, like, an alderman is an effect, is an elected position. They should expect to receive citizen comment by email and Twitter and text and however other way that people communicate with human beings these days. So, like, what recourse is there if a, if an alderman complains about that?
Well, once every four years.
Don't get intimidated. That's the recourse.
Don't get elected?
Don't get intimidated. It's, you can be intimidated. It's like back off and when there's this thing about being civil, that's like code for back off.
Right.
Like, you know, we want to try and like pull you back.
Michelle Obama said the best.
Why don't we go high?
We go low, we go high.
But we're so high. We're so high.
I, I think, you know, one thing I will say is sometimes it's, you know, understand that the council members are people, humans too, and they have feelings and they, you know, they have strong beliefs as well. And, you know, sometimes even the highest court guy don't have to vote on complicated issues, but I get yelled at by people and I'm thinking, why the heck are you yelling at me? And, and it's, you know, it's sometimes just the way you approach folks. And so, I think there's also a self-reflection, you know, how am I approaching another human being who is complex and has issues? And really, you know, the fact that they decided to run and put themselves, you know, in this public, they, they care about these issues and so, just keeping that in mind.
So, could something become part, like, how does something become part of the public record? Because there's the citizen comment at the beginning of a meeting and then they have their show and then it's over. How could a citizen then put something into record to reflect what their impression of the show was?
You can, you can submit the sta, you can submit the statements to the clerk's office and we'll put them in the minutes. You can, yeah, I think someone yelled out a letter to the editor in the newspaper. You can, Facebook is very effective nowadays and, you know, there are a number of that happening. Or, you know, petitions. I, I think petitions are a great way to submit them to the clerk's office. So, I'll go back to you, Ms. Esther.
Yeah, one thing, I'm going important when you go out and you talk about the summer program and that the people that was there at the council meeting and they did speak passionate and had a lot of great things to say. And you say, well, they took that, they took that list off. Well, this is one of the priority things we're not going to cut. But that's not what's going to happen. If you understand the budget process come October, you will see that item there and it has a percentage that they want to cut it by. So, it is still on the chopping block. It's not off the chopping block until December, the thirty-third one is, is passed and they haven't voted for it. So, we can't be telling people that it's off the list. It might be off that list, but it's still in danger. So, we still need people to be out there speaking for it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with that at all. I think that's...
So, we need to be saying that.
Yeah.
Because if we're about educating the people how the city processes they can do things, then we have to state the facts and stuff.
Yeah, I, I would also encourage you and anyone else who's interested in that to come to our event that'll talk about progressive ways to increase revenue. We'll bring some experts out and that can be a way to save those programs. And also, we, we want to do a session on how to do community organizing and bring out some professional community organizers to do a similar session. So, I think those two would be important for folks.
Try to find people in the communities that will do it voluntarily and we don't stop paying them because we don't have the money.
And I'm very glad that Ms. Paul Lee decided to do this event voluntarily for free. So, if she's around somewhere, thank you very much for that.
One more question about citizen participation. Sitting in the audience, is there, like, what are the boundaries of civility as we're calling it? Like, can people hold up signs? Can people, I see, can people, I mean, obviously, we can wear T-shirts to show facial expressions.
Yeah, I think holding up signs, some of that stuff is, I would say, at the discretion of the chair because that falls into, is it, potentially, is holding up a sign blocking the person behind you and could that, you know, interfere with that other person? But for the most part, I think it's free range as long as you're not disrupting the business that is going on before the board, you're free to do as you wish.
We're the public, they're the elected officials and they're held to, you know, the code of ethics. And I think they really are held. I'm a, you know, I'm a public employee and I'm a, I have students and you can't fall apart when a student looks cross-eyed at you. And I'm sorry, we have to stop acting like we're children who are behaving poorly. We're the public and we have some passion and sentiment. They are elected officials and representatives who should be held to the code of ethics. And many of them have yet, they need to have them be held to that higher. And so, because we all know they've violated it.
I think also to, to look at the idea that they're elected officials, that you guys are the ones voting for them and if they're not listening to you, then you can run them out of office in the next election. I think that's something that, the constituency, the constituency should be able to emphasize the fact that you hold the power over them sitting up there. So, yeah, I think that should be noted.
Two years before the election cycle kicks out. I mean, it's three years, but two years before it really, really kicks out. Okay, it is, it is almost...
Yeah, I was told I had to close at ten o'clock and we go to adjourn before midnight, don't we?
So, we're going to turn it over for the last part.
Yeah, this won't take long, but it's nothing new, you know, tie in. Just look at yourselves, you know, if you come to city councils, I know you're all active in condo boards and not-for-profit boards and everything else and that's what this last hour is really all about. But that's why I needed to give you the introduction and the fundamentals first so you can apply them anywhere you go. I work with professional organizations, nursing, medicine, HUD, Federal Medical Association, Law Association. I've had, as a client, the Village of Northbrook since nineteen ninety-one. I've been to Winnetka, I've been to the Hanger Foundation in Glenview. The only place I haven't been is here. And that's why I volunteered because I was working with the library and they were going through all of that and I'm going, but you know what? Nobody but, I think it was you, that I get the call from the office that I see on my caller ID, City of Evanston. What'd they call me for? I paid my water bill. And that's when they asked me the next week if I would do this. Okay, would you pull up the slide and we're going to boards and committees? Just close that off and go to boards and committees. Is that just pictures, right? Boards and committees. Okay, good. You all have the second handout, which is boards and committees. You'll have it, it says boards and committees. Okay? Okay. You can advance it. Okay. Ready? The definition and the characteristic of boards. We, you've had, apparently, this must be the first time you've had an in-depth discussion or an open session on the city council and rules and so forth. Good, because I noticed you had many questions and nobody was moving. So, I said, this is important, let them continue. Okay, this is the general parliamentary that applies to anyone. But as I said, the city has adopted Robert's Rules where their own rules are not, it's either not covered, they will go by, they have their own, their rules come first, okay? I have, I think there was one organization that didn't have a parliamentary... First thing I do when I look at the bylaws, I don't start in front to get the name and the objective. Well, I'm looking at that to see how amendments are done and if they have a parliamentary authority. I have one organization that has no parliamentary authority listed in the bylaws. So, I said, the mere fact that you hired me, we're going by Robert's Rules of Order because I'm a member and I'm prudential by the National Association of Parliamentarians and our parliamentary authority is Robert's Rules of Order. So, we're going to run this meeting according to Robert. Because when you don't have an authority written in your bylaws, anybody could come in here and say, you know what? I moved that we run this meeting according to parliamentary procedure for dummies. And it's a perfectly legitimate motion because you haven't provided for it. So, look at the bylaws of organizations. You make sure that in the back, there are three things. Parliamentary authority, how amendments are made, and the dissolution clause. So, if that organization falls apart, that y'all can't run off with the money. You have to have something in there about assets, you know, about bills being paid and how the assets are distributed, et cetera. And many organizations statewide in courts are, they, they want, if you're a foundation or you're looking for funding, you better have a dissolution clause because they'll make you go back and write one. Okay. A board is an administrative managerial or quasi-judicial body of elected or appointed persons which has the character of a deliberative. That means you deliberate, you're not, you know, you talk about things before you make a decision. Assembly with the following variations. And any action of a governing board can be rescinded or modified by the membership except when the matter has been specifically delegated to the board in the bylaws. Let me give you an example of why I added that. I had an organization, I'm about ten or twelve years ago. I just attended the meeting. I wasn't the parliamentarian yet. But the members were complaining about the date and the location of the annual meeting. Well, we're the membership and we run this organization and we put you in office. And I happened to read the bylaws. As I said, I wasn't their parliamentarian yet, but I was a parliamentarian. So, I pull out their bylaws as I do with any organization and right there in the section on responsibilities of the board of directors, it said, "The annual meeting's location and time shall be set by the board of directors." So, I read that to them and I said, "No, you agreed to that when you adopted the bylaws, so it's up to the board of directors to set the time and the place for the annual meeting." See, many organizations, they don't read their own bylaws. So, they didn't know what was in there, but they adopted them. So, encourage your members, and if you're joining an organization, read the bylaws. You went over the rules tonight very, very well and asked questions and had them answered. But if something is specifically assigned to the board, the board can do it. If it's not, it's the membership, okay? So, in that case, nosy little me just said, but section such-and-such says that is the duty of the board and the specific always outrules the general. Yes, you're the membership, you put them in office. Now, let them do what you told them that they could do. Okay, next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm now that...
You're controlling me, I don't have, okay. We're going to the second one. We had the definition.
Do I go in the wrong direction?
Yeah.
That next one.
Next one, there you go.
The executive board of an organized society. Number one, the bylaws provide for board authority, which I just gave you an example of. The board may not delegate its power. You are responsible for certain things. You can delegate, you can delegate the task, but you don't delegate the responsibility, okay? So, your power can't be delegated, I'll keep, stay there for a minute. The board, the bylaws specify the number of members, the method of selection, the terms of office and duties in the bylaws. Board members have no individual power or authority. So, you don't go out and say, "I'm a member of the board of directors of X, Y, Z and this is what I think." No, you go out, remember, there's no I in team. A board is a unified body. When you're going to speak publicly, you can only speak as a board member on positions taken by the board and those under the authority. If you got your own opinion, the best example I can get is at a convention, a national convention of delegates and somebody from Illinois once, and I had to correct them, went to the microphone and said, "I'm a member of the board of directors of the Illinois Nurses Association and I think," and I said, "Leo, you speak whatever the board's position is. We gave you instruction. If you want to speak as an individual, identify yourself as an individual and not a member of the board." So, if you have a personal opinion, make sure you're speaking at, publicly as an individual. You're not speaking on behalf of the board, okay? You have to toe the company line, okay? So, there's no individual power or authority. The president doesn't have any more power than anybody else. You're a unified body. The board exists permanently, but its membership is chosen for a period of time. I think the best thing to do, the, the alderman has staggered terms or they all at one time?
All at one time.
Okay, if you're in an organization, it's good to have staggered terms so you're not turning them over every two or three years.
Well, that ain't...
You may have a three-year term, but if you're in a new organization or you currently have everybody together, the next time, I mean, when you amend bylaws, it's called a proviso, you could say that we're going to change the bylaws to have staggered terms so we don't turn over the bylaws all at one, the board all at once. So, for the next year, two thousand nineteen and twenty, we will have, say, there's nine members in the board. We're going to have three with a one-year term, three with a two-year term, and three with a three so that every election, you change. And so, but the bylaws have to say, even in a proviso, for nineteen and twenty only, three members shall be elected for a one-year term. So, when that's over, then you have started the staggered terms so that everybody isn't off at once. Next. So, the board exists permanently, the membership changes. So, you may be the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty board, or two thousand twenty to twenty-second, et cetera. Boards have no minimum size. I've been with boards that had nine members and then one I have now has thirty-three. They're frequently smaller than other deliberative societies and its operation is determined by powers and responsibilities from the authority outside of itself. If you're incorporated in, are there any lawyers in the room? Okay, good. But sometimes I have to ask them a question. By authority outside itself, that could be the membership if you're unincorporated, but if you're incorporated in the state of Illinois, there are certain things that are required. You can tell that by reading if it says, first thing in bylaws is the title, et cetera. The name of this organization shall be Inc., an corporation incorporated in the state of Illinois and the residents, so forth and so on. That being, this is why I always ask, are you incorporated? Because the rules change and you'll see why in a few minutes. So, they're smaller, its operation determine, a board within an organized society is an instrument... instrumentality of the society's full assembly. Okay, you're not going to take four, five hundred or a thousand people everywhere, but you elect people to serve as your governing body. They're the ones that speaks for the rest of the membership. This is why you have open sessions and meetings to find out what's on people's mind, when you do strategic planning, et cetera. You get input from every, everyone. And I have some organizations where, when, if they have an executive director, the boss, you know, hired by the board of directors, when it's time to evaluate that person, say like my organization is divided into districts throughout the state, they'll ask the presidents of those districts or members, send them a form to tell me what you think about the EV. And then they incorporate that. So it's not just the board evaluation person, because this executive director, they're the hired person, of course, represents, they're the administrative person. So they want everybody's input so they can determine whether or not to extend this person's contract. How do you treat the membership? How are you doing with the money? How do you treat the staff, et cetera? So those surveys are very important. And we tell the people when they're hired that, you know, you'll, you'll be evaluated by the board, but we're going to get input from other people. Okay, next. Characteristic of effective boards. You know, um, in my experience and moving, I retired from nursing now, I do part-time, this is kind of a part-time thing for me, which I enjoy very much because I realize how much is not known by the public. This is why I did this and this is why I offered to do this pro bono tonight. I added, just by my own experience, that many people feel like being on the board of directors looks good on their resume. They're going to get a job. First thing before recruiting for like an election coming up, all they want to know is how many meetings are there? How many times a year do we meet? Not what are the responsibilities, uh, what is my, you know, do I have to give or get? In other words, donations. You can't ask somebody to do something you're not willing to do. They don't ask about how many committees they have to be on or whether or not they be the chair. They learn that going on. This is why some of them quit. This is why we do board orientation. The lady who was sitting here is Alah Collins from Oak Park, and I'm glad she came tonight because she was reading your rules while I was talking. So she'll be, uh, looking over those and, uh, you know, she was comparing them, but it really helped me because I didn't have time to read them while you were talking to them. I was doing this. But she and I conducted a seminar on January fifth, not a seminar, a webinar. There was a board of directors, a brand new, it was the National Black Nurses Association, it was Chicago chapter. She's in Oak Park, I'm in Evanston. And somehow we got on our computers and put together a board orientation that lasted two hours and we must have had thirty-five people either on the phone or on the computer, and I'd never done that before. So we put together a webinar and we're pretty proud of ourselves because we, we didn't even do it in the same room. She was doing slide number one to twenty-six and I was doing twenty-six to fifty. And we just talked about duties of directors and some of this is in there, but we realized now that we don't have to be in a room full of people, that all we have to do is set up freeconferencecall.com, set it up and tell people how to either tune in by computer or just by phone. And I was feeling pretty good because it's the first time I've ever done it, but she and I did it together. So in other words, we told these people, you're committed, you're dedicated to the clients, the work of the organization and its vision for the future. This is why I said, don't go around talking bad about something that you're a member of the leadership team. You're involved. In addition to attending meetings, listen carefully, effective board members lend their skills, expertise and talents to the organization through committees and special projects and they work in partnership with staff to effect positive change. This is why when you're looking for board members, whether it's your condo board, your church board, or your garden club or whatever, who's good with finances? Who can write bylaws? Who's good at strategic planning? You don't just look around to see who's interested in you, you got to teach those people what it is to serve on a board. Next. The other characteristic, you're informed. You educate themselves. So when we say, oh, you're interested in running for the board, here's a packet, here's a job description. Here it describes what kind of work you do, are you willing to commit the time? If you're not, don't bother running. Because I don't want, you know, I have put in bylaws and this is so nice of me, I have to tell you. You know how people will skip like this six meetings a year and they'd miss four of them? And then, and I've run into this with clients, they're waiting for somebody to resign and they never get the letter. I'm going to tell you at ten after nine on Tuesday night, how to fix that real politely like. You write in your bylaws, you be real polite because you don't want to tick anybody off. So in the bylaws, where you're writing the whole section on board of directors and the term of office and qualifications and duties, and you talk about attendance at meetings, all you have to say is, quote, unexcused absence at two or more consecutive meetings constitutes a resignation. And if they miss it, they're out. You don't have to have them send a letter. You can tell them, you can write them a letter after they missed this consecutive meetings. But say somebody's been in an accident and had been really sick, of course you're going to reconsider that. But if they just don't show up, and all right, they missed one, and then they missed two, and then maybe the third one's coming up. But if you say, two or more consec- consecutive meetings, not every other meeting, but just write them a nice, just put it in the bylaws that two or more unexcused, two or more absences, unexcused absences constitutes a resignation and that covers you. So you don't have to be going after them. I know you like that, don't you? But isn't it nice? Instead of waiting, or sending them that they're out and then they want to have a hearing and all of this, you knew that when you joined, that if you did miss, are missing board, because somebody else has to pick up your work and then they've got to reappoint somebody to fill the unexpired term. Now let me tell you about that. If you have a three-year term on the board of directors and somebody serves one year and you appoint someone, the board can appoint someone and it's in the bylaws to fill the unexpired term. And you can run, say, two consecutive terms. Now here's the kicker. And this is good for, this is why I love bylaws, because this is where all this picky stuff and nobody else cares about. I love bylaws. So you write, okay, um, a person may serve no more than two consecutive three-year terms. Somebody has moved to another state or was dismissed for missing meetings and they got a year, they got two years left on their three-year term. So whoever is put in that spot, make sure that you have language that says that an unexpired term, what is the definition of a term? A term is half of the term. So if they served, say it's a three-year term, okay? And they've served half of that, which is what, eighteen months or so? Yeah, okay. Three-year term, half of that. If they've served more than half the term, that is considered one term if they want to run again. If they've served less than that, say they've served one year, the last year of a three-year term, then they can run again because that doesn't count. So the definition of a term is defined as more than half, even by one day. And weekends do count in boards. So more than one day of the term, that's considered a term, which means that they can run again. Okay? They can run one more time, so two or some or three consec-. But how do you define a term? That if it's more than half of the unexpired term, if it's less than half, they can serve two more, two full terms plus, because it's less than half, two more terms because that is, but if they serve more than half, because it's more than half, it's considered a term. Got that everybody? Everybody's nodding their head, so I don't have to say anymore about that. Okay. So they know all of this, the policies, have a policy manual, a procedure manual, make sure they know the rules and can support the positions and clear about expectations. I've already talked about this, attend meetings, do what you're supposed to do. Okay? If you're the secretary, take minutes. If you're the chair, don't get involved in the conversations. If you're the vice chair or if you're a president-elect, many organizations, I frankly do not like the office of president-elect. And I'll tell you why. Do you, any of you work with organizations that have a president-elect? Okay, good. Because if you have a president, vice president, let's just say, vice president, president, vice president, secretary and treasurer. Okay? Then the president can choose not to run for president because they figure they, look, I've been in this, two terms, I do not want that woman's or that man's job. But if you're the president-elect, you don't have a choice because you're the president in training. So when you have the president-elect position, you may still have a vice president unless the bylaws say otherwise. If the president gets hit by a bus, then it's the vice president who moves up to the presidency, the president-elect stays because that's the president in training. You are the president-elect, then you automatically move up to president, then you are the immediate past president. Got it? So usually those are one year, that's three years, but it's a one-year term as president-elect, a one-year term as president, and a one-year term as immediate past president. Got that? So if all of a sudden you realize, this person ain't playing with a foot of debt, there is nothing you can do about it because you elected him. So you got to put up with this doofus for the next three years. Whereas if they were the vice president, they could choose not to run or you could choose, the nominating committee could choose not to slate him. But if you have a president-elect and you don't know much about this person and they're not doing what they're supposed to do unless they resign, you're stuck with them. Okay? Now, for president-elect, which is the immediate past president, and Azella and I learned this during the workshop, because we were both parliamentarian for a national organization that had a president-elect, which became the immediate past president, and we had to go to all the board meetings. The immediate past president was always a thorn in the president's side because he sat at the other end of the table and it was all this non-verbal eye rolling, because that's not the way I did it. Well, you don't want somebody critic, this is your term as president. So what I did, I said, okay, Madam President, here's the conference table. You and I are sitting up here. Here's the secretary, here's the treasurer, the vice president is on the other side, I'm on the left side, I'm left-handed. Somehow the media past president was always at the other end of the table. I said, let's get here early and put out all the name tags and make sure she's sitting on either side because as long as she's looking at you, she's criticizing and you feel like she's evaluating everything you do. So we just got there early and reassigned people. We didn't put friends together. If a member was a new member of the board, we put them next to an older member. I'm telling you this for a reason. Don't allow people, if you're on a board anywhere, to come in and sit where they want. You can do it the first time, but if you find that they got side conversations and they're sitting next to their buddies and they're poking each other in the side and that media past president is rolling her eyes at everything you do and say because you feel like you're not very effective as a president. So you can decide where people sit and when they come in the room, where's my tag? Oh, you're over here and you're over here. They don't know why, but this is the president's prerogative because it's her meeting. And I'm hired by the president, I do what the president says, after she does what I say. But I'm doing it, so my job is to make the president look good. And that person who had their term, who didn't do very good, and you're going to criticize the current person, not on my watch. Okay. So. We get all of these experts, people who know about, well, what is your expertise? Get those people. If somebody is good at writing bylaws and strategic plans and finance and all of that, encourage them to run for the board, you need those people. You know, trained staff and current board members conduct orientation programs. What Azella and I did with that webinar was an orientation for a new board because nobody could get out on the same night in January in Chicago. Okay? So we did it by computer and phone. History, basic values, aspirations, and this is why every organization needs a historian. They need to look back and learn from history or what people. This is why you save minutes because you, they can, you can go back anytime and review them and see what's going on and what you need to change and what happened when. Accountable. Board members understand the importance of attending meetings and being committed to the work of your, show up and do your job. Okay? And if you can't do it, it's okay if you resign if for some reason, because the only way we can get rid of you is if you resign or if you are absent from those consecutive meetings that I talked about. Next. Ex officio board members. Now, you said that the mayor is ex officio?
For all boards.
For all board positions. In regular organizations, what we call deliberative organizations, persons who are members of the board by virtue of office or committee chairmanship held in the organization, those are ex officio members. They are members by virtue of office. He's a member of the city council because he's a mayor. Okay? If it's a condo board, it may be, you know, the developer. Now, the important thing is, if the ex officio member is a member of the organization, you know what I mean? It's open to anybody, like I'm a nurse, so I mean, there are people who are ex officio members because they are the dean of such and such school and they founded this group or something. Once you're out of that office, they are no longer ex officio. So they're ex officio, but if they're a member of the organization, there's no distinction from any, so they can vote and make motions, et cetera. If they're not an organization member, say if it was a pharmaceutical company or a medical association that gave us a whole lot of money, they can't be a member of our association. Okay? So they have all the privileges without any of the obligations and they're not counted in the quorum. Okay? So when you have ex officio members, you better state ex officio with vote or without a vote. Everybody can talk, but they can't, they can't vote. But ex officio by virtue of office, and once they're out of that office, they're no longer on the board.
So in your opinion, based on our rules of organization with the mayor being an ex officio member of every board, committee and commission? And it doesn't really distinguish whether he has the right to vote?
But you'd have to write that in.
So does that mean that currently the mayor could show up to some committee and have the right to vote as a full?
No, unless you say with vote or no vote, unless you specify that he's a voting member or an ex officio with vote or without vote, if you don't say that, what has been the practice? That Ms. Esther brought up earlier. What is the custom of the organization? When the mayor shows up at this committee, is he showing up as ex officio without a vote? I mean, he could talk anywhere and people can listen to him, but does he have a vote on that, in that group? And that's something that you guys have to decide.
Well, that also came up with, I know that, like, Clark was saying, you know, if the mayor shows up, it was like if Alderman shows up at one of these committees and they want to do some, you know, if they want to vote, not vote, but like have some discussion with them or even maybe even join the closed session of a, of a committee.
But what do the bylaws say about what is the composition of that committee? Does it say anything about Alderman shall be ex officio members with vote?
And it doesn't.
It doesn't?
Yeah.
So if it's a custom that they've done it, if you want to make it a rule, fine, but it's a custom, but once you develop a rule or somebody finds a bylaw that was buried somewhere or a rule, then the custom dies. Okay? So you have to state whether or not you want that to happen.
Which that discussion has been had in rules committee and that has changed.
Oh, so the rules committee has voted on that issue?
Rules committee has discussed that issue.
Discussed it. They have voted.
There's been a determination that Alderman should not be going to the closed session.
Transacting board business. A board can transact business only in a regular or properly called meeting or conference call of which every member has been notified and which a quorum is present. You know, current law, I deal with a lot of nonprofit, they're nonprofits, and the reason I ask is that the whole eighty-two page nonprofit law of the state of Illinois is on my desk in my basement at home. And I know that in a properly called meeting or conference call, the, I think it was nineteen eighty-six, whenever we went, the whole therapy, you're, you're the computer expert, right? That unless the bylaws specifically prohibited, nonprofit organizations can tuck, conduct business by electronic media, meaning conference call, computer, et cetera, people these days, except you folks. People, these days, except you folks, in Evanston City Council residents, and it's wonderful that you're all concerned about what goes on and take part in this, many people don't wanna go to face-to-face meetings anymore. I've had two conference calls in the last three weeks on a Monday night at seven o'clock, when one of my favorite shows is on, that I got a tape, because I gotta listen to these folks, and they don't know how to identify themselves when on... So there's a whole protocol on how to conduct business on a conference call, but it's... You can get a quorum on a conference call, because one person was in Greece, the other one was in Joliet, the rest were around here, but we had a quorum. Okay? But I told people, "Please identify yourself, and I don't wanna hear the dog barking in the back, so go on mute or something." But you have to have rules for those, but you get better attendance. The big thing now, we always said as parliamentarians, you do not do bylaws by conference call or electronic media. But because one organization here in Illinois could not get a quorum at the meeting to amend the bylaws to make them more coherent and more in sync with today's, you know, communicating, you know, communication methods, we couldn't get it. So we had to get a lawyer's opinion. He was a parliamentary lawyer from Washington, and he found a little used note that I picked up since then, where it says, "Business may be conducted by..." Well, bylaws is business. Okay? So until the bylaws were changed, this organization could either by computer get their bylaws amended, or by a phone conference, and by, you know, signing on a webinar, whatever you call it, they could conduct business by electronic media, so they can amend their bylaws to change the quorum, because your quorum was too high for reading. So we're looking at that now. I'm going to Buffalo, New York in September to a parliamentary conference, and that's going to be, "How do we bring organizations' ruling documents in compliance with today's age of technology?" Okay? So if you have a properly-called meeting, of which every member has been notified, because I remember people making conference calls, like a president said, "You're all members of the board, and she needs an opinion on something before the next regular meeting." She calls you, she calls you, she calls you, then she tells each one of you what the other said. That's a straw poll. She needs to get you all on the same call at the same time, so you can hear the discussion, then you make a decision. But that's how she... I said, "No, that's a straw... That's what you call a straw poll. You need a decision." So when you're on a conference call, and you don't do "aye" or "nay" for majority, have the secretary, you know, your X number of people are on the call, start calling your names and ask them how to vote. If one person, if they feel like it should be confidential, put everybody else on mute, and then you call each one and get it, and then report whether or not the motion so many in favor and so many. So there's a really efficient way. And you know what? You do adjourn before midnight, because most of those people have worked all day, and they have maybe an hour, an hour and a half at most. So you get right to business. You get your agenda in the mail ahead of time or by email, take attendance and get right in, because you're signed on at a certain time, you know, freeconferencecall.com. Okay? And everybody signs in, identifies themselves, they speak, and it's usually six or seven o'clock at night, and they take care of the visit. It's much more efficient than if you're all sitting in a room. But there are some where you really need a face-to-face meeting at least once or twice a year. But if you're meeting every month or every other month, you know, there are some you can do by conference call or other electronic media. And what you call... Well, of course, you're gonna count. You know, the quorum, you don't call a meeting to order unless you know you have a quorum, and always know what your quorum is. And in the first part, I did address quorum. Does anybody remember? How many people can you expect in the most inclement weather? You know? Now, here's where incorporation comes into play. The not-for-profit corporation, the state of Illinois, says, "If you're incorporated in the state of Illinois, a quorum cannot be less than one-third of the members of the board, and at a membership meeting, it can't be less than ten percent." Okay? So it can't be less than one-third, and decisions are made by a majority or two-thirds of the members present, not present and voting. You know how some people will abstain just because they're not interested? Okay? Say you have a fifteen-member board, and only ten are at the meeting, and your quorum is seven or eight. Okay? It's a majority of the members present. Even though you may have twelve people present, and nine of them are voting, the vote is still based on those people present, so they might as well vote. Now, here's the other thing that ties into that. According to the Not-for-Profit Act, if you are a board member of an organization that's incorporated, and you object to something... Now, you can be quiet if you want, because, you know, it's gonna be a majority of the members present and voting. But if you decide that you wanna abstain, you just don't say abstaining like many people. According to the Act, you have to write a letter of dissent, or else have the secretary put in the minutes as to why you are abstaining, or get permission to issue a letter of dissent in a specified period of time. So this is what I mean by accountability, commitment, participation involved. You don't just sit there and let things go because, "Oh, I'm not interested in that." But if you decide you want, "I am abstaining," but why are you abstaining? Maybe you got conflict of interest, so put it in the minutes. My husband owns the company that ensures us, so I have a conflict of interest. But if for some reason you feel that this is not a good decision, put your hat, the secretary write your reason, or you can issue a letter of dissent that gets attached to the minutes. So those are requirements. Quorum, not less than a third. For a membership committee, not less than ten percent. Majority or two-thirds of the members present, not present and voting. Okay? And a letter of dissent. Okay? So that's the difference between incorporated and unincorporated. Board records, minutes. Board minutes should be kept by the secretary, as I said earlier. Minutes reflect what was done, not what was said. You don't have to write every song, every word in the minutes. You can summarize a discussion. What I did when I was working with the nurses, I made up a form that had four columns. Over here would be, "This is the minutes of the June twenty-sixth board meeting. Subject. Here's the motion. Discussion. Responsible party. And due date." So you could write right across to see what was done, by whom, et cetera. The motion was adopted, or lost, and what the decision was, you know, what would affect what it had. But if you have the motion, the subject, the motion, the discussion, and the result of the vote, write across instead of a whole bunch of paragraphs together. It's much easier to read. If somebody insists that their minutes be... Well, you can say, "Well, what is it? You know, what's so special about your comments that you wanna word by word?" What I tell them is, "Okay, if you get sued by somebody, and you get called into court, and your name is in the minutes because you said so-and-so, do you really want that? You were here when I said it's best to put..." It was properly moved and seconded, there was debate, and it was voted to without using any names? Because one person makes the motion, and it's not a decision until the board votes on it, so it's a board decision. It's not Mary Jane's. Minutes are available only to board members unless the board grants permission to a member or approves of distribution to the assembly. But make sure that you do not distribute them until they are approved. If you send them out ahead of time, even to board, because people tend to show things and give them to other organizations where they're a member, maybe, because you may be trying to do the same thing, make sure you put draft on the front. Draft. Then at the next meeting, you will approve them. And remember, I talked about if you have to correct them? You can just say, "The minutes were approved as corrected," because you can't add anything that didn't happen, so additions are corrected is not correct, right language. So minutes are approved as printed. And that's one of those adjourn before midnight, consent calendar things. Here's... Okay. The minutes of the April twenty-eighth meeting you received in the mail, are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as printed. So when I say, "Are there any corrections?", you can say, "Your name was spelled wrong." You could say, "You weren't there." Okay, the secretary writes all that down. She hasn't put them in these minutes, she puts them in the original minutes that you're in the corner, you know, margin. Okay? So these minutes, just say, "The minutes..." Are there any further corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as corrected. Not, "Is there a motion to approve the minutes, blah, 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 blah?" Now, if you're a group that has an assembly or a board that meets like twice a year, and there's some action items, and the minutes haven't been approved, how are you gonna carry out something that hasn't really been approved? You just made the decision. You haven't approved the minute. What you can do is appoint a minutes approval committee, and these two or three people, when the staff completes the minutes of the secretary, send them to these people, and then within two or three weeks, say you're not meeting for three months. You can't wait that long, just like in general groups where there's big membership assemblies. I told people, "You hold minutes for a whole year, because you've had..." Here's the House of Democrats. You got the minutes, you give them to the next group, those people weren't there. What did you do in the meantime? Did you carry out any of that stuff? They shouldn't be sitting around for you. A minutes approval committee has permission to review the minutes, and as parliamentarian, one group I had, they were a national licensing body. What they would do is, they'd send them to the first member, the chair of the committee. She would write her comments. She'd put them in an envelope, Federal Expressment to the next person. Federal Expressment, and then as the parliamentarian, I was the last one, the Federal Express would leave them. I would look at everything, compare my notes, and then we'd all sign off on them, and then we'd send them to headquarters, so that at the next board meeting, the minutes approval committee have approved the minutes of the meeting. Now, at the next meeting, that doesn't mean the membership can't look at them. It's just that they've been approved. So you can pull them up and say, "I still found something wrong." But you're looking at minutes that haven't been approved, they're not just sitting around. So you have the right to review them anyway. Okay? So that's one way to expedite business. Now, nobody has a right to those minutes other than the board unless you decide as a board, not as a member, that you want them distributed. But I would say, "Don't distribute the draft, wait until they are approved." Or you could have them come to the office and review them, but your minutes are your minutes, and nobody else has the right to them. Next. Except, well, that's why I said, the city council is different. In organizations, board minutes belong to the board unless you approve distribution. Yes?
So when you're saying that the board has to approve if the minute, you know, what happens if there's legal action, and they subpoena or something the minute? They have to listen to that legal action, right? The board can't decide to not...
So what's different?
You're talking about city.
No, I'm talking... No, I'm talking about a nonprofit.
Oh, a nonprofit, okay.
No, but the thing is, legal action, there's usually a disciplinary committee who are appointed, they have a lawyer, they have the plaintiff, you know, the defendant and their lawyer, and there's a committee that meets, that's appointed, and everything is confidential, and they make a recommendation to the board, which is expulsion or something, and they deal with that executive session, and they just report the results out, like they're gonna be made public if the person loses their license. But all of that stuff is not in the regular board minutes, because there's a disciplinary committee that is confidential, and nothing is reported out unless it's to the board, and if it's something that's gonna be made public anyway, everybody's gonna know about it, like embezzling and so forth, you know? Because we can read that so-and-so lost his license for a period of time because... But you know what? You gotta be careful about that, because if your procedures, especially financial, were so loosey-goosey that somebody can embezzle money out of your organization, somebody isn't watching the store. And you'll have the Attorney General and IRS and everybody else who deals with money at your door, because that has happened. And thank God, I was in parliament every time. Body subordinate to board. There's an executive committee, it's usually the officers, and there are board committees such as... When we say board committees, they are made up of members of the board, personnel. They may assign a member to be on there, but there's executive committee, it could be strategic planning, it could... Personnel, personnel, because you need a committee to deal with personnel matters. Standing committees, as I said earlier, have an ongoing function, and they're listed in the bylaws. Okay? One thing I wanna remind you is, when the officers change and the boards change, go back and review those committees, because some people... I know, at one national organization, I was on the bylaws committee for about sixteen years because somebody, and I said, "You know, every time you have an election, you go... You need to go back and review your committee structure and look at the committees, see how long people are on there, and get their..." There's no, you know, term limit. Leave them if they wanna stay, and... But you need to look at your committee structure, so you're not burning people out. Okay? So every new board should review all the committees. Special committees are those that are assigned a special function. We need to appoint a committee to do X, Y, Z, and you have three months to do your work, so so-and-so's the chair, because you're the first person named. Have your meeting, and we want your recommendation by September first. And if they don't do it, there's a motion called discharge of committee. So you can discharge the committee, which means you fire them and take it back and employ somebody else. You know, board members should remember that committee work should not be done in board meetings. Committees are the workhorses of the organization. And when boards that I serve start telling committees how to do it, I say, "Ah, that's what you appointed them for. You give them a charge and a deadline. You don't tell them how to do it." Okay? You know, there's an old saying, you know what it is? God so loved the world, they did me create a committee. So the special committees, task forces, ad hoc, whatever you wanna call them, focus groups, they do their work, and once they submit their recommendation, they're out of business, which sometimes you gotta tell them they're out of business. Thank you very much, the committee is discharged, and they can go their separate ways. The effect of partial change in board membership. Remember, I talked about the stagger terms, not having everybody go off at once? Following each election, even if only a partial change, the board becomes a new board. We might designate them as the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty board, or the two thousand, you know, put a year to it. That way, you know, it's a new board each time. See, I remember said earlier that boards exist permanently, but their membership may change. This is how. Now, all unfinished business falls to the ground. Let me... I'll tell you, I'll give you an example of how I got caught up in that, because somebody... I was in Atlanta, Georgia, addressing the group, and somebody, there was something that the board wanted to do, and there were a couple of people, and I think it involved buying a building, and they could get it at a good rate on Embassy Row in Washington. Anyway, they assigned it to a committee, and during the workshop, I told them, "All unfinished business falls to the ground." This was two years previous. And when the board changed, and the new board came on, they said, "Oh, we didn't finish that." So falls to the ground means that it's dead. Anything you did in addresses dead. And then they said, "Well, Joan Budgley was a parliamentarian at the time, and she told us that unfinished business falls to the ground." I said, "You misquoted me, because if I remember correctly, you appointed a committee. That matter was referred to a committee, and you gave the committee like nine months or a year to read and offer. The committee was still working, and they never, while your term, reported." So that is not unfinished business. So now I say, "All unfinished business, something you didn't get around to, falls to the ground unless it's in the hands of a committee." And so I had to write this big document, and I checked with a lawyer, and I said, "I'm covering, because it's easy to mine in across this country in vain, that she said it." And I said, "Unless it's referred or in the hands of a committee." So the thing was, they didn't wanna bother with this issue, so it's easy for them to say, "Oh, we didn't get to that, so it's dead." You appointed a committee to look into it, and it was still in the hands of a committee. But it took a while, and they have somebody else now, and I warn the current person, be careful of them using your name without your permission, whether it's on how to do minutes, and whether it's in, you know, on the campaign literature, which they shouldn't be doing anything without your permission. And then new and standing and special committees are appointed. I addressed that already. Look at your committee structure. See who's been serving, who you'd like to keep, who is about ready to go, because you don't wanna burn people out. Next.
If I could make a quick note.
We're going...
Nick from Facilities needs to enjoy this.
They need to.
Yeah, yeah. So, we have a few more minutes.
I know, we're almost done.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nick. He said, ten of, ten of properties, play clubs. Conduct the business in small boards. It is not necessary to formally, say you have a board of, well, Robert's called small boards of twelve or less present, which means that everybody can sit around the table. You don't have to formally obtain the floor, like raising your hands and looking, you know, with nobody else speaking, just speak, you know, you can call them by your first name. Motions may need not be seconded, because you're going to make a decision as a committee, okay? On behalf of the committee. This is why we always say, when there is a report, I had to remind Luther into this in Tidley Park, if a report is coming for a committee, no second is required, because the committee contained five people. You only need a second when one person is offering a motion. So, if somebody says, on the behalf of the X, Y, Z committee, we recommend this, the bishop got in the habit of saying, no second is required, because it came from a committee. Next, an issue, this is important, may be discussed informally without a motion. Instead of putting a motion on the floor like you do in big meetings, you can bring up a subject, discuss it informally among yourselves, and when you're ready to make a decision, then the chair will say, are you guys ready to make a decision? Then put this into the format of a motion. You've already had the discussion, you can discuss it further, but you're in agreement around that table as to how you want to word this, and it cuts down on the length and the decision, because everybody has had a chance to say how they want it worded. Okay? During a formal consideration, a member may speak as many times as they can get to the floor, okay? Now. Do they have those rules? Okay. Many times, unless you have a rule, and when a proposal is clear, the action can be approved by general consent. I would say, if it involves money, take a vote, you know what I mean, take a rule call. But general consent is, is there any objection? We've had the discussion. Are we all in agreement that we should do so-and-so? Everybody, yeah, okay, then we agree. That's what we call general consent, or unanimous consent. And the presiding officer may pay and participate in the discussion without relinquishing the chair. Next. So, conducting, sending something through a committee has its benefits, you are much freer to deliberate. Reports of boards and committees. Report of a board is an official statement formally adopted by and submitted in the name of a reporting body informing the parent assembly of action taken or recommended. When you have a report, I don't know what format the city uses, but I have people, this is committee, this was our charge, this is the discussion, this is the background, this is the recommendation. So, you give them the background and they're voting on the recommendations in that report, okay? And that's offered by a majority of people agreeing with the report. So, somebody, you've heard the term minority report? That's offered by the people who didn't agree with the majority, okay? And that's only in committees, you don't do majority reports in board meetings or in general assemblies. Minority reports come from committees own, because they are the group that disagrees with the majority. So, they have a chance, the Supreme Court does it all the time, even today. Okay, next. The former report, I've already addressed that, we go, I'm trying to move right along here. Important report, reports, action should be combined to the recommendations. Adopting report means that every word is, so, if there are no recommendations in the report, the report is on file. You don't have to take any action, that can go on a consent calendar if it's just for information. You don't vote to accept a report or receive a report, you adopt the recommendations. So, just put it on file, I want to adjourn before midnight, okay? Short oral report, a motion to accept is not an order, short oral reports are acceptable if the secretary's able to record it, otherwise get it in writing, and a report should be written like I, not I, but on behalf of the committee, so-and-so-and-so, or the president, the president is issuing a report on whatever. Next. Special rules for the conduct of business. An organization may adopt, I think you all, do you have this? This was a workshop I did on April twenty-eighth in Evergreen Park, and rather than, I just copied it, do they have these rules?
Yes.
Okay. I'm giving it to you, so if you want to adopt rules on any organization, you can just use this as a guide. What it covers is, the meeting shall start on time, and then, the big deal these days are cell phones, and you have to have a rule that says that they either be on vibrate or take them out in the hall, because many people are busy and this is all they have, but at least silence and put them on vibrate, go outside, and the agenda reviewed and adopted, and then-